Wednesday, the April 17th, 2024. You know, I called my sister this morning for her birthday, so I should have remembered it was the 17th.
February, yeah, it's good.
It is February. Anyway, so with that being said, we'll go ahead and start with item number one, being this is a work session. And so Leo, at your request, let's recognize you first to kind of tee it up, I think.
Yeah, thank you, Chairman. Good morning. A lot of times we talk about how when we spend money on roads and infrastructure, these are actually community investments. And so we asked one of the leading economists here in our state, who knows our state and our county very well, if we could get an understanding of what the community impact from an economic perspective is when we spend these kinds of monies on roads, and specifically the Road Maintenance Fund that was originally authorized by voters in 1985, was reauthorized in 2005, and then will be coming to the Board on May 1st to consider a resolution to call for an election for reauthorization again here in November of 24. So just to emphasize that this is, you know, a reauthorization, it's not something new, and it's not an increase, and to distinguish that this is not the Panal Regional Transportation Authority. This is the Road Maintenance Fund. And so Mr. Rounds is here to let us know what he has found in preliminary analysis of economic impact. Thank you.
Thanks, Mr. Chairman. And Jim, I just might add, because this is a work session, I think there's probably going to be some questions, so we might stop you during the process and with those questions, if that's okay?
Absolutely, Mr. Chairman.
Okay, thank you.
Good to see everybody. It was great to take a look at the, all of our past analyses that we've done in different parts of Panal County as part of this effort. We were tasked with providing a forecast of revenues, of what it would be going forward. That's always challenging when you have historical data that bounces all over the place because of the interesting way that Panal County initially grew. It started with a lot of population growth, and then it's been sliding more into population and jobs. That makes modeling different, difficult, so we ended up using a lot of different approaches. I found that if you do two or three different types of forecasts, and you get similar results, you feel better about it, rather than just relying on a single econometric analysis. You got to plug some common sense in there as well. So we put a lot of time in on those issues. Just want to emphasize that it is subject to change. And this one, the Maintenance Fund mainly captures the extent that economic activity could decay if you were, if you fall from the current base level that has still been adequate enough to allow you to expand and create all these new business opportunities. And then what I'm hoping is that we'll get more amenities and additional opportunities related to job growth as we continue to go forward. But transportation is one of the most important items. If you're familiar with, there's a magazine called Site Selection Magazine, and it's for economic developers, but they, what I like about them, and it's the only thing I really read on it, is they publish a top 10 list of what all the site selectors list when they're surveyed. And transportation is always one, two, or three on these categories. More recently, workforce has jumped up to number one, and that's something else that people are looking at. We also found that transportation is really the first signal that a region gives, and how, it's not necessarily an accurate assumption, but it's perception of how well a community or a region is fiscally managed. Because if you're driving on quality roads, they'll assume that, hey, we have our house in order on some of these basic things. Do we have access to other basic business inputs? Do we have competitive fees? Do we have a pro-growth, but quality growth supervisors in the area? Is that going to continue? So a lot of the fundamentals that you've had recently, we're assuming are going to continue. But there's also some risk of what would happen if we don't have the Maintenance Fund as a supporting economic development tool going forward. And I actually wanted to get your impression on it, so I'll be stopping on that slide and asking you for some perspective as well. Here's the historical numbers. And so from '07 to '23, it was 311 million, but you can see we're at a much higher base right now. And the question is, first, in the short term, where does this base go? And are we going to have any federal government-related economic slowdowns? Is it going to influence the type of downturn that we have? Is the Federal Reserve Board going to be doing certain things? So there's a lot of stuff that you have to look at and consider going forward. And so here's just a small sample. And, you know, fortunately, we have enough history with you all where we could review a lot of old forecasts, we could review a lot of old economic impact analyses, dozens of different reports that have been published, and some of the quality work that you've also been doing more recently. But like I mentioned, going into this, if you do some historical analysis to do a forecast, you end up having to figure out, well, what was happening over the prior 20 years or more? And you have shifts in how it's, how the county is growing, so you got to pick that up. The size of the local retail base, right now, I feel like it's a little bit undersized. I think that the recent projections for the county at the state level are a little bit too conservative. And I think there'll be more opportunities going forward for having more, again, local amenities in different regions. Road quality, keeping pace with demand, household incomes increasing, we're also going to be seeing that. It's going to be not just growth, but it's going to be higher quality growth. So that same household that now has an additional business opportunity, because they matched up with some of your workforce development programs and other opportunities that you, where you teamed up with the businesses that have located here, they're making more money, so they're spending more money. And that means that you're going to have additional tax collections, and it's going to create the demand for these additional amenities. So it's going to be even easier to market the region going forward. I know that in the past, the assumption has always been the people in retail always have 100% perfect information on an area, and that whatever the retail level is in an area is assumed to be an accurate portrayal. I find that just absurd. I think that there does have to be some marketing of an area to these retailers, and in the past, we mainly focused on how do you attract the base sector businesses, like the Lucids and all the others. But how do you maybe educate the restaurant establishment? A lot of the other things that really make a community feel like a community, and so we had to make some assumptions on that. And because we're pretty optimistic on Panal, we had that increasing as well. So it's higher incomes, very strong job growth, people spending more money, and it's staying local. All those things are important. And in terms of the competition, the two areas that were amass that I'm the most bullish on is here, and then in the far northwest valley, in the Peoria area. These are areas where I think we'll be competing with projects, but there's so many projects, both will be able to benefit. But these are the two that I feel like have the best opportunities and some pretty solid policy management, not just the elected officials, but also staff. That's important, too. We have to consider water and energy supply and demand, state-level economic conditions. Is there going to be any kind of a pullback on how the state wants to work on economic development? National-level economic conditions. The ones that are the uncertain ones, and this is why economists keep saying we're going to have a recession, we predicted like eight of the last zero recessions so far in the last couple of years. And that's because we've had the federal government, good or bad, depending on how you feel about it, has been spending a lot of money. We had the national debt go up by $8 trillion in, what was it, a four- or five-year period? It's unprecedented. Well, what happens is that money isn't, it's the federal government, but it's spent within the states. Well, that props up different budgets, and it allows for extra tax collections to occur. That is what's been heading off a mild downturn. At some point, they're going to have to turn off the spigot, but they're going to have to do it slowly. So our forecast, one of the risks also, is can we trust that Washington is going to manage the economy properly? And that always causes additional concern. The impact of a recession, I think, again, will be more mild than we've seen in the past. And then there's a lot of other factors that we've looked at.
So Jim, with those things that you were talking about, if you go back to the first slide of those two that you just did, if I could just make a couple of comments in regards to those, most everybody knows, especially in my area, the amount of retail leakage that we have in that area. I think you were part of that, putting those numbers together for us, and it was in the billions is how much we're actually seeing from that highly populated area that's going out. But then in taking, on the opposite side, with the improvements that we've been making over the years with a lot of our roads and infrastructure, on highway in particular, Gary Road, and expanding those and making those more accessible, I really attribute to some of the retail stuff that's coming into that area right now. And finishing up where Home Depot, they were supposed to go there, they're now, and now we've got some other major chain stores that are looking in that particular location that, that retail leakage that we've been experiencing, we're plugging the holes there. And I attribute a lot of that to what we've been able to accomplish on our, what we've done in our roads and infrastructure.
Mr. Chairman, that's spot on. In fact, when we did the analysis, we looked at retail leakage, and we looked at economic development leakage. That was a concept that your staff came up with, which I thought was interesting. And that's, what if we had a more normal jobs-population ratio here, rather than the population being here but working elsewhere, and then creating the business taxes elsewhere? They'll still come back, but if you're lacking retail opportunities, then you're losing both sides. You're losing the business purchases, and you're losing the individual employee purchases. And yes, you're right, it was significant. And I do feel like as the connections within Panal County, you know, continue to grow, you know, it's like all these, you know, you picture a body with all these different, you know, veins and arteries. It, once it gets connected, I feel like you're going to start to be moving towards more normal statistics. So like the jobs-population ratio right now, because we started with mainly just population before the jobs came in, it's very low. But part of our job was to figure out how high is it going to get to, and then building off the current base, you know, because if you have something that's, you know, very population-based on the front end in terms of a ratio, and then it's more balanced later, the average is somewhere in the middle. So you got to figure out how that's going to work. But that's one of the bigger, bigger issues. And we've done some of this in the past, and we'll do some of this in the future. When you do those economic impact models, we usually just see a direct impact, and then there's indirect and induced, and there's a lot of like footnotes explaining it. The indirect and the induced is the additional smaller businesses that could locate in an area. And because in the past, that's what's been bringing the multipliers down, when people don't have an opportunity to spend money and businesses don't have an opportunity to spend money, the multiplier impact on your projects goes down. But Panal County is one of only two areas where we had to modify all of our multipliers because they weren't picking up this kind of new growth that you're showing, because all, the multipliers are based on historical relationships. So that's another reason why we're very optimistic. And I feel like it doesn't have to be something extreme in terms of economic development that you put together. I think it has to be sticking with a lot of the main principles. Let's have a good transportation system. Let's make sure we have a quality workforce. Let's partner with a lot of the private businesses and make sure that they have their needs met, but let's not over-incentivize them. Let's make them a good, you know, partner within the area, and that's what we've been seeing so far.
Okay, thank you.
Any other questions on some of these points? Okay. So here's a visual of the forecast. The dark line is the historical numbers, and our baseline is basically the orange. The lower bound represents, whenever you put together a long-term forecast, you end up having a wedge because there's more uncertainty going forward. But interestingly, there's some uncertainty right now because of those recession-type issues that we're dealing with, and the debt, and everything else at the national level. The econometric equation picked up about 95% of the historical numbers, and it was one of the few where we put together, taking a look at historical population and employment. Normally, the two go together too tightly, where you're essentially putting in the same variable. But the population number picked up different things in the jobs because we saw the jobs come in after the population. So we started with that, and we even controlled for the past downturns, but they were so severe, the model suggested that revenues are going to dip. This is where you get to looking at different approaches to the modeling. We also took a forecast of employment, and we basically modeled the forecast like we would a business, and converted that into the different pieces of economic activity that you would see, including spending on retail items. And so when we, when we did the pure modeling exercise, which is just an equation to try to see if you can identify which factors are influencing it, it was pretty good historically, but I thought it came down a little bit. When we did the forecast for employment and converted it into the same, we were basically jumping off of that high point that you see. And then our, the question that we had is, how do we deal with the next couple or three years? And just the way things are going, the forecast, I feel like they're going to be slowing. Now, there is an optimistic forecast. We'll still be talking about this a little bit more, because there's a few things that we need to finalize. But this is roughly what the revenue forecast is looking like. And I would say of all the different technical analyses that we've done, we did more technical analysis in this than any other project that I've ever done, by at least twofold, because we wanted to get it right. And it's really hard when you have this kind of, the historical numbers jumping around and all of a sudden just explosive growth. We wanted to look at it from multiple perspectives. We even sought some counsel from a, an economics professor that I know well, that is familiar with some of the advanced modeling. And we didn't talk about the specifics of what we were doing, but we got some advice, and that helped as well. So we really put a lot into the background of this. We didn't just throw some numbers together. That forecast basically gives you over 20-year period, $800 to $1.2 billion in revenue. Again, I just want to caution that these are preliminary, that you will get a formal forecast, and then planning decisions can be made based on what level of certainty you want. But there was one piece where I'm, I need to have a conversation with your staff, and then maybe you are interested in opining now. This has, this is the employment forecast. And so it's the same thing. The orange is our, is the state baseline. We thought that was too low. So we always have our own forecast that we utilize in these instances, and we built on one that we previously did for Panal, and that's the green, and that's our baseline. I'm very comfortable with those numbers, just based on how everything's been managed, and if we assume that it's going to continue, we'll be able to realize these job gains or avoid the losses. The one that I'm the least certain of is the decay. And just from doing this enough, and what I opened with, which was transportation, infrastructure is indeed one of the most critical things that you can have for economic development, my concern is that if the roads really decayed, so we're not talking about just staying at a status quo, we're talking about decaying, and traffic congestion gets worse, you end up potentially having fewer businesses locate if it, if these conditions are met. The initial forecast was, I'm wondering if there could be a loss of jobs in the out years if it got that bad. We didn't want to go negative, but that is a pretty severe estimate for the decay. But my gut feel is, if the roads truly become almost undrivable, how are, how are we going to continue to expand the economy here? And so that's something we'll be brainstorming with staff, because that's one of the last pieces of the forecast, and that's why it's preliminary. But if you all have any opinions, I'd love to hear them now.
You bet. I don't necessarily have an opinion at this point, but I, I'm curious about the, is this everything from like agriculture to manufacturing in the jobs that we're looking at? I mean, because, because there will be sectors that do decline, just out of nutrition, and there'll be others that really probably hockey-stick up and that type of thing. So I was just curious how broad of the, the parameters of the jobs that's being used in this.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Miller, that's a good question. It's essentially everything, but when you look at the break, and you do some of the modeling, it, in, from our opinion, and this is where it gets to a little bit of making an informed guess when you're having to decide something like this, is the employment mix will just start migrating back to what it was before. And so we, and I think that makes sense, because, you know, the farming and other businesses like that might not be as impacted, but a lot of the newer stuff will. So we kind of see regression back to what the employment mix was before, and that is something that we actually looked at, because we had to take a look at how household incomes might change over time, wages might change over time, but that's, yes, that's, that's accurate.
And if I may?
You bet.
Just, so, all these years of the transportation level, you know, everything from A to D, I mean, really, when does it really start impacting? Because I think that, that, that volume of traffic, and I came through Santan yesterday, and I came down Adaway Road, I was going south. I bet there was a line of cars trying to go north at that intersection that was well over two miles long. I thought, there's nobody's going to put up with this very long. And so I don't know, if there's a way to measure, when does it really start affecting the quality of life, the desire to stay or move on type of thing?
Mr. Chairman, Mr. Miller, that, very good questions, because we have to get into the psyche of the resident. What actually makes them want to live here? What makes the business want to locate here? And it, quite frankly, for the red line that you see, one of the biggest challenges was identifying how much current momentum do we have going forward? How many years of extra momentum do we have before we might, might see things plateau? The current version has only about like a year and a half before it starts to impact it. One of our other options that, because we have options still that we're working on, is the red line still goes up a little bit closer to the orange line in the first couple of years, and then it starts to decay like it is. But it, for new, for people wanting to live here, maybe it takes a little longer, maybe they end up moving out here, but then they realize a little later, I might have made a mistake because it takes me a half an hour to get to the grocery store. Those could be problems. And even though this is considered a Maintenance Fund, it seems just too critical to not consider the fact that you could have a decaying scenario at that scale. And when you put the math behind it, and I'll show you that in a second, what that, this modeling translates into, it's a significant number. And so I feel like this is a very, very important issue for the county.
Yeah, it, you know, and I'm not one to use the term quality of life, but it does impact that. It will affect the psyche of the residents at some point. Thank you.
Any others? Okay. So when you, when you take a look at the lines, we're basically going from the green to the potential, the current red, the draft red, is, we're talking about more than 200,000 fewer residents, almost 40,000 fewer jobs created, many fewer homes, a lot of local revenue lost at the county and the city level. So that wedge, even though it doesn't, everything's still growing, but that wedge equals this opportunity cost, that's a really big deal. And these numbers were so big at first, I was thinking, this gets back to that kind of common sense check when you see something, it's like, you know, is it, is it really going to be that? Every scenario where we tried to reduce the numbers to show what some of these other lines would, these other, let me go back. So when we tried to reduce like the job loss scenario and the population scenario, the lines didn't make sense. And so the modeling gave us the lines, the common sense was, are these numbers too big? But when we put numbers that we thought might be more reasonable, and this is why you spend time analyzing something, then the lines didn't make sense. And the, and pretty much, I mean, it's the data that's important, but the lines are what, like, I would look at and others would look at. And at the end of the day, you have to say, am I, am I providing a forecast that I feel good about? And I do a lot of peer review of academic papers all the time, and sometimes the university folks don't like it because it'll be, you know what, I love what you wrote there, but you left off five things that are relevant to what's making the economy grow, so your paper's invalid. And they say, thank you, and then they find somebody else to review it, and it gets published because there's a lot of pressure on that. But that common sense is part of what we have to do. And what was nice, though, was that brainstorming with your staff and talking about the economy, and especially Leo, who's been brainstorming with your full team, but also being able to talk about economic development, you know, with the team leader, has been very helpful as well. I think we might need to change the batteries in this later. So those are the main points. You'll have, there's a few more things to figure out, but this is kind of the gist of it. I don't think the main story is going to change. It's just some of the numbers might have to be refined. But the theme is what we wanted to present, to see if our story matches your story and the story that you're hearing from the taxpayers in your, in your districts.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you. No, I see it in my district, which is up through Santan Valley and into Supervisor Goodman's district, and everybody complains about roads and impactful, you know, and it, we're going to have more homes coming, certainly, because if we have more economic development, we need the people to work there, but how do we get them around? So roads is a big push for us, and this temp is nice, but we have to have other funds to actually build bigger roads, because this is just, again, to maintain. So we've got to look to the federal government, to the state, to other options.
You know, I appreciate that, because I think if we were to look at history, going and talking about history as a part of all of this, I mean, we, our county suffered a lot during, from 2010 to 17, in regards to the HERF funds and having dollars available to do, and that was all roadwork. And we, regardless of, we weren't able to keep up with the roadwork to some degree, but we still experienced a tremendous amount of growth during that timeframe, our county did. And so, which even made it more impactful of the need for the roads and everything else. So, you know, there is a tremendous need that we go forward. The other thing is, is I always think about is the fact that we, as a board, and not myself, but boards before us, made the conscientious decision not to use property taxes to pay for roads. It's these other resources that are available to help pay for these roads and infrastructure, from the development themselves, impact fees, and then obviously the HERF funds. This particular fund right here is what we're able to do and maintain and move forward. So I appreciate what you've done there. And, you know, Supervisor McClure and I, and now Kev, and all three of us, we all experienced what that Santan Valley area, and now Miller, sounds like, you know, with him driving through there, he saw it himself and experienced it. Supervisor Sertie has all been a part of that and seen.
I don't go down there.
He's got a four-wheel drive, and so he's able to take the backroads, and so, but no, I think, I think the majority of us, all of us actually sit up here, we, I think we are all inclined to, to look at the value of this and see what, that things need to be done and stayed forward, because I, honestly, I'm with you. I do not think that the growth is going to slow down. I do not believe that.
And let me, and Mr. Chairman, if I might, which is a real quick story, and this is, this was from three years back, but it really brought in the importance of transportation. Gilbert was having an event, some economic development event, mayor kicked off a discussion, and it was myself as a panelist, Chris Camacho from GPEC, and a business owner that recently located in the area. And one of the questions from the crowd was, how can we make businesses like this gentleman's business do better? And I was talking about regulations and taxes and, you know, basic things like that. Chris was talking about. Chris was talking about economic development tools. Well, the business owner went last, and he said, if you could just pave the cul-de-sac outside of our building, right now our trucks are turning around in the mud. If you just paved that thing, we're good. And I've never forgotten that. I think it's one of the best stories because it, one, it emphasizes that economic foundation items like transportation clearly are very important. But in some cases, the 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 transportation piece is part of the incentive to get the business to locate here, but just the look on his face when we were talking about technical stuff, and he just wanted a damn cul-de-sac put in the next.
Classic example.
Supervisor Kavanaugh, did you have?
Thank you, Mr. Goodman. So my anecdotal observation about Adaway Road is correct. We don't go north to shop because Adaway Road is a parking lot. It's it's really insane, but and so I can identify with, I can order it faster on Amazon and save a lot of time rather than just go shopping north. So I would agree that our road infrastructure is critical moving forward. Coolage is growing, every every empty lot's being built on, and and I don't see the growth slowing down. I would agree with you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Just real quick. I guess he did have something. That example of the cul-de-sac is the, you can't see the forest because of the trees, you know? I mean, that's, and sometimes we get, we get hung up here with policy and this and that. We should really talk to the people that have to deal with it on a day to day basis. Some of the better ideas are out there, and we're not really looking at them. So I've certainly seen that over the years with different scenarios, with different businesses and stuff. So thank you for bringing that up.
All right. Thank you, everybody.
I think we're, I think we're good, right? Okay. Thank you.
Sorry, item number two. Here they come. Tara, are you up first or?
I think Joe's gonna come.
Okay, all right.
Good morning, Supervisor Joe Ortiz, Pinellas County Public Works, well, Development Services. But speaking on a Public Works item here, I'd like to take a few minutes to maybe segue into what Jim Rounds just spoke on as far as the economic impacts and an analysis on our, on that road maintenance and transportation fund, that reauthorization. That goes well with item two, which item two is what that dollar goes towards is this five-year plan that Tara's gonna dive into the detail of it. But between that, I kind of wanted to give you some some of the realities of, like the good story of, yeah, we just paved my cul-de-sac and I'd be happy. So I can give some of that reality to you. So right now, Pinellas County, the unincorporated area, we're required or responsible for approximately 2,000 miles worth of road. Out of that 2,000 miles, we have approximately plus or minus a mile or two of 1,500 of paved roads. We have another 500 of unpaved dirt roads. And we actually do a pavement study. It's it's an old one right now. We're getting ready to renew it here next year. But in in that pavement study, we were able to inventory all our paved roads. And in that inventory, we're able to model a condition, pavement condition index of what our roads look like. Right now, they're at a 62, which is equates to about a D, you know, that's not good. That's not where we want to be. I may have been that in high school, but that's not what I want roads to be, you know? So.
Don't pick on me. That's what I.
I wasn't looking at you.
Just just so you know, D is for diploma.
There you go. There you go.
Yeah, and also in our in our models, just looking at some of the hard numbers of what it would take just to keep that D, we need to be spending about $13 million a year on that just to keep a D. That's not making it better. That's just trying to keep our existing paved roads of where they're at. So some of some of the other thought to go into this too, or bullet points for you, is the, you know, one of those old, I guess, mottos is, you either pay me now or you're gonna pay me later. And that's the way it is with our existing road network. You either stay up and maintain through pavement preservation, and it's it's a minimal dollar amount versus let it go and we lose the life of that road and we have to do a total reconstruct. So little little deeper dive into that. So let's say we have a brand new road, and these are honestly, yeah, swag numbers, but they give you a general idea of what we're trying to talk about here. So we have a brand new road, brand new paved road. And the way the industry practices for preserving this road is, okay, two or three years from now, after after we pave it, we'll come and do a fog seal and a crack seal. Minimal dollars, five grand, 10 grand. It's a lot of money, but minimal dollars relative to reconstruct. And then you let it go for another seven years, then you gotta come in with maybe a chip seal. And that'll give you another extended life of another seven years. Then you come back with a micro surface or a slurry seal. That'll give you another seven to 10 years. So you can extend that life to about 20 to 25, maybe even 30 years. Say you don't do that pavement preservation, you'll probably lose that road within the 10-year cycle. If you're lucky and, you know, you don't have any heavy loads on that road, you may be able to extend it a little further. But just to give you the the dollar difference, a pavement preservation over that 25-year cycle, you're looking about 120,000 to 150,000 over that whole cycle, just trying to maintain it through pavement pres versus doing a total reconstruct. A total reconstruct is for a simple two-lane, low-volume road that we have aggregate base and we put a chip seal on. You're talking about a total reconstruct about $500,000. That's our low-end road. Some of the higher volume roads, we need a high structural section where we need, you know, a 12-inch AB with a six-inch of actual hot mix. Yeah, you're looking at over 2 million to to 5 million in that range to for total reconstruct. So that gives you the, you know, the two ends of the spectrum that we'd really like to stay on that bottom end because it's a, it's a, it's a better use of that taxpayer dollar if we can just keep extending the life of that. We hate to get to the point where we have to do a total reconstruct. So that that's my soapbox. I'll, if you've got questions, I'll answer. If not, I'll turn it over to Tara.
Just a comment on we pay now or pay later. I, my wife and I years ago, back when you'd go to the store and get a DVD or something, we rented a DVD one day, and we went back and we were like a week late. She went up to the counter and put it up, and then we were doing a little bit of getting some goodies and stuff, and the lady yells out, hey, lady, you want to pay me now or you want to pay me later? And so anyway, I don't, anyway, forget it.
Chairman.
Yes.
So you made a good point right there because you were talking about low-volume roads and and heavy loads. And that's, that's one of the problems that we have is with all the growth that we have going on and the building going on that are sometimes what would be considered a low-volume road would have high volume of heavy equipment on them, which tears them up faster, which consequently costs us more in the long run. I realize some of that could be repaired maybe with impact fees, depending on where it is, but but it is tearing up our roads. So that's, that's a complication to this whole situation.
Correct, correct. A lot of our roads may have started off as a small rural road. Now with all the development around it, and now we tripled the volume coming through there, the tripled the axle loads coming through there. Yeah, how do we, how do we resolve that too? So.
Anybody else? Oh.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So we bought a machine to recycle roads, is that right?
Correct.
So how does that fit in? Does it help us save money about the same?
Yeah, I actually, that's another good point, and it's a, it's a great new tool. So this one, we call it a full-dep recycle. So that full-dep recycle is kind of for roads that are in between that are, they're kind of beyond just a topical pavement preservation, the chip seal or fog, but they're not total done as far as you're not into the base and and or if you are into the base, this is a great tool to bring that base back. And it, it's not considered a total reconstruct, it's considered more of a rehabilitation. Because a good example is, okay, we have a road that, yeah, it's beyond the pavement pres, but we really don't want to come back and do a total reconstruct. We bring in this operation. This operation is to take whatever's there, recycle whatever's there, get the the structural section compaction back to where it needs to be, and then we can put a surface on it. The alternative is a total reconstruct where you have to haul everything, you have to mill it, pack it up, haul it out, bring in new AB, rework your AB, process it, lay it back down, get your compaction back into it, and then put a surface on it. That's why the huge dollar difference in between that and what we'd like to do with this FDR.
And as long as I have you here.
Sure.
Did we get parts stolen off of that thing?
Uh, no.
No?
No, there was miscommunication. That was actually RDO. That's the individuals that we purchased it from. They came down to do some maintenance. They pulled some parts off of it because they had to replace it and then take it back up to the shop and bring out new parts. People saw people working on it. They assumed that it was something getting stolen, but it wasn't. It was part of our our maintenance with RDO.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Yep.
That's it. Tara?
Good morning, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, Staff. I'm Tara Harmon, Public Works Department Senior Transportation Planner, and I am here today to present to you the 2024 Five-Year Improvement and Maintenance Program, as recommended to you by the Transportation Advisory Committee. The program is the county's near-term transportation plan, basically our guide that identifies projects in the current, upcoming, and following three budget years. The plan is a snapshot of the status of projects as of February 2024, when the Transportation Advisory Committee recommended the proposed plan for approval by you, the Board of Supervisors. The program has three pillars. They're the funding, the plan, and the committee. The funding is generated by Pinellas County's Maintenance Fund, which Mr. Rounds spoke on earlier, and we'll touch back with in a little bit. The plan, of course, the plan is a listing of transportation projects that are programmed over a five-year period. It establishes a tentative schedule and potential funding for completion of the county's transportation planning, construction, and major maintenance projects. And it's reviewed and updated annually by the Transportation Advisory Committee. The committee is a 10-member panel of citizens appointed by you, the Board of Supervisors, and they are charged with recommending the plan. So we're gonna circle back to the funding, the Maintenance Fund. Revenues from this fund are distributed to pay for local projects in unincorporated Pinellas County, as well as through a population-based formula between all the 10 incorporated cities and towns within the county. The fund was originally approved by Pinellas County voters as Proposition 400 in November of 1986 for a term of 20 years. It was then reauthorized in 2005 with anticipation of the upcoming sunset, again as Prop 400, and placed on that November ballot. The reauthorization again had a term of 20 years, and that is due to sunset coming up at the end of December of 2026. So in anticipation of the upcoming sunset, the county has taken actions to launch our Preserving Our Future Public Awareness Campaign to highlight the history of transportation in Pinellas County, the accomplishments of the current fund, and take a look at our future roadway maintenance, safety, and economic development needs. The Transportation Maintenance and Improvement Fund is Pinellas County's only reliable funding source for roadway maintenance and preservation. We began our outreach efforts in January, and we will wrap them up at the end of this month. We anticipate coming to you to call for election in May, and we are hopeful to see the reauthorization on the ballot in November. Program funding. This chart reflects revenues collected from the county's portion of the excise tax or the Maintenance Fund over the last five years, with the projected revenue collected at the end of this fiscal year also. So as you can see, the collection has increased more than 8.0 million since fiscal year 1819. And so far this year, we have collected an average over, an average of a little over 1.5 million per month, which would project to be about $18.4 million at the end of this fiscal year. The program priorities or our goals. Over the last few years, we've had a major shift in our priorities of the program, shifting from maybe safety and paved mileage to maintenance. Because as we've had this fund and established it for nearly 40 years now, and we've continued to pave, as Joe said, we have about 1,500 miles of paved roadway in the Canal County. I think back when the fund was established, we had like 500. So now we have all this roadway that we need to maintain. So we've definitely shifted our priority to maintenance. But we also have several other priorities as well, one being paved mileage. As you know, to address air quality mandates, paved mileage must increase on unimproved roadways that have an average daily traffic count of 150 or greater. Also, we have economic development. The county's leadership has made economic development a strategic priority, so we consider projects that support economic development. As you know, movement and people, movement of people and goods is the determining factors when it comes to attracting new business and creating quality jobs. We also have a priority of traffic flow. In the past few years, our primary focus, excuse me, due to several county widening projects, traffic flow is improving, but it will need to be managed throughout the entire county as areas are definitely continuing to develop. The plan is a dynamic document with two moving parts, one being the new projects. New projects are typically added to the fifth year of the plan. Transportation projects are requests are accepted annually. These requests can be submitted by anyone and are accepted via email, mail, or online submitter. Those projects requests submitted on or before September 30th of each year will be considered for inclusion in the fifth year of the program for the upcoming budget year. If the request is submitted after September 30th cutoff date, it will then be considered for the next budget year. So what happens to these requests? Let's see. Once a project request has been submitted, it's reviewed by the appropriate district manager for eligibility. Eligibility factors include average daily traffic, maintenance and rideaway statuses, drainage, or utility conflicts. If it's deemed eligible, it's then reviewed by Public Works leadership and staff, and it's ranked on several different categories, and scored on different categories by staff. A few examples of those categories are project connectivity, reduced safety risk, environmental compliance, and county maintenance cost reduction. A cost to complete is then determined by county leadership and district managers for each eligible projects. Finally, all those projects are scored and then presented to our Transportation Advisory Committee, and the committee is tasked with prioritizing the projects in order of highest priority. Yep.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You bet.
Who's the district managers?
Those would be our project managers.
Okay.
So that would be Charles Williams.
Okay. Who's mine?
Scott White.
Scott White, okay. That's all I need for now. Okay, thank you.
And same goes for you, that has been for everybody else. I know we'll probably want to interact and, okay, thank you.
Just wave me down. Sorry.
Yeah, I almost jumped up, but I.
The committee, as their ranking and priority, they consider factors such as district manager and public leadership reviews and rankings, and the project details, as well as public input. This year, the committee is recommending 23 total projects for budget year 2728, which is the fifth year of the program, totaling about $15 million, with 19 of the projects being new projects and four being continued projects. These projects include six rehabilitation or maintenance projects, two safety projects, 13 paving or ARDP-style projects, one design, and one construction slash partnership project. The second part of the plan are the plan amendments or updates made to the plan annually. Amendments are changes to existing projects that are already programmed on the approved plan. This planning cycle, our committee is recommending a total of 62 amendments to the plan. They include 19 administrative. They include 19 administrative changes, 16 status changes, and that's where we would go take a project from programmed to pending to underway to completed, sometimes canceled, sometimes projects are combined. Then we have 27 carryover or advancements. Advancements are added projects. So these are projects that maybe we needed to collect another year for funding purposes. Maybe the cost to construct increased, so we needed to carry it over another year and collect a little bit more money for that. This slide is a snapshot of the 2024 temp in all. We have in budget year 2324, 23 projects programmed totaling 12.6 million. Budgets years 2425, $26.8 million in projects, or 23 projects totaling 26.8 million, sorry. Budget year 2526, we have 25 projects totaling 20.4 million. Budget year 2627, we have 14 projects totaling 13 million. And then our last year of the program, budget year 2728, as we just discussed, 13 projects totaling 15 million. Starting tomorrow on April 18th, our Public Works Public Information Officer Ray Teas will issue a press release announcing the 30-day public comment period for the draft 2024 plan. The period will, the comment period will last through May 17th. At that time, a digital copy of the draft plan and online comment form will be available to complete and submit on the Public Works Transportation Planning webpage. And I do want to note, attached to this agenda item was just a summary of the plan. Tomorrow, what will be uploaded to the webpage will be the full plan, including the maps and brief descriptions of the projects. Due to file size, it wasn't easy to attach the whole plan to this. So you will see that online tomorrow. After all comments have been addressed, I will come back and request final approval of the plan at the June 5th regular meeting. So let's move on, and I'll tell you a little.
Can I ask another question?
Absolutely.
Do you receive a lot of comments on an annual basis?
It depends. It really depends.
That's an attorney's answer.
Yeah, well, I mean, it does. Last year, last year, I think we received more than we had in years prior. So last year, we definitely received more.
And who would comment?
Anyone and everyone. I anticipate that this year we would receive more only because of our outreach efforts, and we've been out to the public so often that I think it's fresh on their minds, and they're going to take a look more than they have in the past.
If I can jump back a couple of slides.
Mm-hmm.
You had like 20, 12 million, and then the next cycle went clear to 24 million. Are you anticipating a lot of revenue or what?
Oftentimes, yeah.
That's optimistic.
That's a very valid question. Oftentimes, what happens is projects get pushed forward. So that money that was reserved for them in the budget year they were originally programmed carries over as well.
Carries over, okay. That makes sense. Thank you.
Any other questions at this point? This is our Transportation Advisory Committee. This year, they evaluated 19 new projects and four continued projects. They recommended all 23, as we discussed earlier. As you know, the TAC members are appointed by you, the Board of Supervisors, to represent each supervisory district for a four-year term. Our current committee just finished up their third year of their four-year term. And we have Ms. Robin Davis representing District 1, Shelby Moody representing District 2, Kevin Lewis and Rusty Riggs, who represent District 3, Sharon Beckman, Steve Johnson, David Garcia, and Mark Seidel all represent District 4, and Maxine Brown and Lisa Bradford represent District 5.
And Ms. Harmon, can you explain why? I'm lucky enough to have four. I know why, but I'll let you.
Supervisor Rickler, absolutely.
I got great roads in my area, by the way.
Absolutely. The reason you don't see an even balance throughout the districts with this particular committee is due to our redistricting we had a couple of years back. So when we redistricted across the lines, it made it to where we had several, kind of moved the lines, and we have several in District 4 now. However, they were at the time, all of them appointed to represent the district they were in at that time. And we are still evenly spaced throughout the county, although it may seem that we are heavy in one district than the other. They do have an even spacing throughout the county to represent their areas.
It was great. Mr. Chair, you have one more. And Sharon Beckman has resigned from this committee. She's moved on to greener pastures.
I think we were told about that, and so.
We were, we were informed.
And so they asked me, they asked me to, and so I think we're working on that now. I think we may have somebody. But anyway, no, I'm being told, no, I don't have somebody, so. Okay. Yeah.
Well, hopefully, we do find somebody.
So we'll get them, yes.
Absolutely. In our, at our February TAC meeting, the committee approved the upcoming meeting dates for our upcoming 2025 temp planning cycle. They are September 17th, 2024, November 19th of 2024, and February 18th of 2025. These meetings are open to the public, and we do encourage the public to attend so that our committee can hear their opinions.
One other quick.
You bet.
Because I have so many in my district, we had decided earlier on that we're going to let the terms expire and then reappoint. So I think all, many of those people's terms expire at the end of this year. Is that?
This upcoming year.
This upcoming year, yeah. Just for clarification.
So before we wrap up, I'd like to remind everyone that the county's website, in particular, the Public Works Transportation Planning page is a great resource for current information on the transportation program. You can find the current five-year plan and the draft plan available to view. You can also make a project request submitted through this website, and you can view a link to the TAC meeting agendas and the minutes for previous meetings. So, Mr. Chairman, if there's any other questions, I'll entertain them right now.
I don't see that there's any. I, one comment that I'd like to make is I think we've got enough information ahead of us that shows the imperativeness of actually re-upping this particular fund. And so as we move forward with everything, economic growth is something that this board in the past, and I believe now, has been something that we've been, has been a driving force for us. And so I think that I just would like to remind my board members that as we come up on this for a vote here in the near future, that we take that into consideration as we're moving forward. We've got to continue moving forward. We've made a lot of strive getting us to this point right now. And unless we move forward, like my mother-in-law has said, if you're not in front of me, you're behind me. And so don't get behind me, anyway.
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Chairman, can I have just a quick point of clarification, specifically on the full-debt recycle conversation I had earlier? Just want to make sure expectations are set correctly because the full-debt recycle is a great new tool, but not all roads are good candidates for that process. Our good candidates are probably those lower ADT-type roads, mile or less, two lanes, that kind of thing. There's some other criteria that falls under that, too. But I just want to make sure that you understood it's, all roads don't fall under that category that we could utilize it on.
But to your point, at some point, all roads, in my opinion, will be a candidate for something like that to begin with before. That's, and of course, it depends on the traffic. I'm reminded of, when I first started farming years ago, we as farmers, we had to, we would deep plow, then we'd come back, disc, then we'd come back and furrow, then we'd, you know, and break it up, the clods. There was multiple times we had to go over that particular piece of property. Nowadays, they have a machine that actually goes in, rips the ground, discs it, and then it breaks up the clods all simultaneously. So there's only one pass that's being made in that process. And it's, to me, that's what you're talking about. A similar process saves on fuel, time, everything.
Yep. It is a one-step train process that as it goes through. But yeah, we'll see how it grows from, like I said, 10 years ago.
I'd be interested to know.
Never thought about this process. Yeah, exactly. It was not even a thought.
I'd be curious as to how that all comes back in the, for in the future.
Sure.
Thanks, Joe.
Thank you.
Oh, timeout. We need a potty time?
In full disclosure, Mr. Chairman, yes, I need a potty break.
Yeah, we're going to recess for a few minutes.
Yep, so good morning, Chairman, members of the board. I'm not Steve Abraham, but he's unfortunately not able to be here. So I said, sure, I'll present this since I've been involved in this process from the beginning. So today, I want to take the opportunity to present the 2023 Subdivision and Infrastructure Design Manual update as well as the Title III ordinance update. And Title III is with regards to subdivisions. And, you know, it's really fitting that we're talking about this today because as you'll soon find out, if you haven't had opportunity to look at it, the bulk of what these regulations and what this manual is about is roads, roadways, infrastructure, making sure that things are built to a certain minimum standard so that it becomes cheaper and easier for us to maintain, and we have consistent and high-quality roadways. So. So.
And quick, Chris, real quick. Just keep looking because one of us may have a comment that needs to be.
Yeah, no problem. Go ahead and interject anytime if you have a question as we go through this presentation. And at the end, certainly, we can go through all the documents, too, if that's desired. So what we're talking about today is the, we're proposing to adopt the 2023 update to the subdivision and infrastructure design manual as well as the Title III ordinance regulations, which is on subdivisions. And this applies countywide. So on the agenda, we're going to talk about the purpose of what these documents are, what they do, why they need to be amended, and what steps we've taken to get to this point and where we need to go from here. So what is the subdivision and infrastructure design manual? So there are three primary functions of this manual. First is it sets forth kind of the minimum standards and policies for how infrastructure is designed and constructed in the county. It also assists designers and developers with the preparation of the technical plans and specifications and reports that go along with the process. So this is very much a technical engineering-based document. So it's, the manual is something that is a supplement to the existing county codes, such as the subdivision regulations, which we're going to talk about today, the zoning ordinance, which is the Title II regulations, and there's an interface there, our drainage ordinance, and of course, our stormwater and floodplain regulations as well. So the manual is complementary to these regulations. And it provides guidance and direction to the development community in the preparation of subdivision plaits, what we want to see on those plaits, how things are supposed to be dedicated, the minimum dimensions, sizes, and specifications of those dedications, and how infrastructure improvements are to be done. So a little bit of history on the manual. It was originally adopted.
Hey, Chris, Supervisor Miller.
Yes. Just real quick, I was thinking about maybe asking this question a little bit later, but I don't think it's appropriate right now. One of the things that we, that over the years, after I got here and we were dealing with the Johnson Utilities area and everything, what we didn't have, and I'm hoping that this is in this ordinance or this manual, that the builder or the builder developer and construction company gives us ASBILts.
Yes.
ASBILts are huge. And the argument was, well, we don't do the utilities. I said, it's our right-of-way. We should know what's underneath it. I mean, so I've just, if you can point that out at some point, I really appreciate it.
Sure. Well, that's a great question. So the requirement to submit ASBILts is part of the process. And as we get into the regulations, we can talk about where that falls in the step. But in order to get releases of their financial assurances, they have to provide ASBILT certification. And to your question, that's for every piece of infrastructure, not just the roads, because we're also interested in everything else. And so we're actually already requiring that now, just by policy.
Oh, good.
So we are getting every ASBILT, even things like landscaping, which kind of maybe seems kind of silly sometimes. But if there's landscaping in the right-of-way, whether it's irrigation system, trees, or other components, we need to know about it.
It's beneficial six years from now.
Right.
Because that's when, that's when you need that information.
Exactly.
Because something's going to change. So, okay, so happy to hear about that.
Along that point, I think the problems pertaining to Johnson Utilities wasn't all about the developer themselves, but Johnson Utility themselves and not providing us with the ASBILts. But going forward, that's not the case anymore. Any of the stuff that is done by, like, there's a lot of construction work being done by Queen Creek as well as Epcor. So that, a lot of that stuff that's happening in our county, I don't know if we can do that with Queen Creek, but with us, that's something that we're moving forward on.
Yeah, so anything done in the county right-of-way requires a right-of-way use permit. And so this manual applies to any infrastructure. So whether it's another town, another utility, doesn't matter. They have to conform their design to our requirements. And then we permit that work within the right-of-way. We inspect it, and then we deem it acceptable. And if it's pavement, we will accept it. If it's other infrastructure, then we, you know, deem that it's good. So that's part of the process. They have to, you know, all pavement repairs, new infrastructure has to meet the same quality standards. So in the manual, there's testing requirements, too, which we can get into a little bit. So. So as I was saying, the current manual was adopted in 2008, and it was kind of a companion to the subdivision regulations that were adopted two years prior to that. And an important note is our manual references other manuals, such as A DOT specifications, Maricopa County's specifications, MAG, that's the Maricopa Association of Governments, ASHTO, et cetera. There's a whole litany of other technical references that are referenced in our manual. So what's changing? Well, kind of a lot is changing in our manual. But really, there's, the changes fall into two distinct categories. So one has to do with the specifications of the design, and the other has to do with the submittal requirements. And then we've added some new sections to the manual that specifically address things like how access to the public right-of-way is determined. So if someone wants a new driveway and they want to connect it to a county road, there's some specifications on that. We added a whole section on traffic calming. Because as the supervisor here knows, it's, that's become kind of a hot topic, especially in the last few years. And so we didn't really have any standards on that. So we were just trying to follow some federal standards or what other cities are doing. So now with this manual update, we have some of our own standards so that we can be consistent across the county when we do these types of things. And then, of course, updating our street signage and traffic signal requirements so that when developers construct new signals, they're using the same equipment and the same types of configurations so that it's much easier for to maintain and more consistent for the public. And then we added a section on street lighting so that when streetlights are installed, that they are installed in the right location, using the right materials. And then, again, the whole section on material testing. That's to ensure quality. And so that the road that's constructed, it doesn't fail prematurely. So some couple of things to consider with the manual update. Again, it's specifications that are required for improvements. It doesn't necessarily say if those improvements are actually required. That, that's an important distinction, because the Title III regulations, that's where you get into what is actually required. The manual just specifies, this is how you do it. So, take streetlights, for example. We don't actually require streetlights, but if a developer wants to do it, then they have to follow the manual on how it's to be done. So. So, yeah, these are standards for construction and design in the public right-of-way. So, it's important to note that, again, these are things that we are going to have to maintain and deal with, whether it's the sidewalk, the pavement, or anything in the right-of-way can become a potential liability or something that we're going to have to deal with in the future if we have to do maintenance, reconstruction, or anything like that. So, it's really important. You have a question?
I, I do. In fact, we just talked with our sheriff yesterday in regards to some of our roads and infrastructure, especially in the HOAs pertaining to parking. It is our right-of-way and things of that nature. And I know this probably, I just thought of it when you were talking about, it's our road, it's our maintenance, it's what we do. I don't know the meaning, but if I could have our county attorney look into that and come back with some, what, what we can do, can't do. I know this is not probably the time, and so I'm probably going to get that instruction right now.
Mr. Chairman, and working with Chris, we have been working on, in order to enforce parking requirements, you have to have rules. So, we've been working on some rules relating to parking, which then, once we get those in place, could be enforced.
Okay, cool. All right, thank you. That seems to be the biggest complaint that we're having in the HOA. So, thank you.
Thank you, Kevin. Yeah. So, to, to that point, the parking regulations would be part of a future Title VII update. So, Title VII being the Public Works Code. And, and that has to do with how we manage the use of the right-of-way and the use of the roads, the public space. So, that's future. That's something that Steve and I are also working on with Kevin. So, that's not part of this regulation. So.
I totally get it. I just, anyway, I appreciate that.
Yeah, no problem, no problem. So, a couple of other things with the manual, that we, there is a public process that has, that we have to go through, where we have to advertise and publish these, the documents, the updated manual. And we are going to be entering into a public comment period soon after this meeting. And as far as the manual is concerned, any comments really need to be technical or engineering-related because that's, that's really what the purpose of the manual is. And we do anticipate, hopefully, if everything goes well, adoption of this manual, as well as the Title III updates in May. And then there's the website there where we have everything posted. So. So, we did take this to the Planning and Zoning Commission back in March, and they, they did vote unanimously to forward a recommendation of approval to this board. So, and by the way, we did have several work sessions with, with the Planning and Zoning Commission on this and Title III before we actually took it for a vote. So. So, Title III subdivisions. So, this, as I mentioned before, the subdivision regulations that we currently have were adopted in 2006. There were some minor changes throughout the years that had to do with tentative plat extensions, the addition of a thirty, third-party trust program, which I'll talk a little bit more about in a minute, and some requirements with regard to replats. So, let's see here. So, what's changing in the regulations? So, there's going to be some, this is kind of an overview, and I'll go through each change here in a minute. So, for, for general requirements and procedures, we're adding a, what's called an incomplete status. So, this is also to help comply with the state law that has to do with how we process reviews and respond with, with comments. And so, yes, 1598. Thank you, thank you, Brent. So, when a plat gets submitted, for example, we have an opportunity to review it to determine if it's complete so that we can actually do a technical review. And then if we reject it, and then they don't respond or don't resubmit, then we can kind of reject the whole application. We're also recommending removal of the, what we're calling the Coordination Committee for Review of Plats. That's really not applicable under today's conditions, especially with our reorganization that's been done and the collaborative team we have under Development Services. There's really no need for, for that. And then we added some specifications for a traffic impact analysis and required compliance with the county's Access Management Manual as part of the plat process. Any questions?
Real quick, thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, what is the timeframe from I submit, and somebody's going to determine it's incomplete? How, how long is that? And how's the confirmation that I received something from you saying it's incomplete? And a person to talk to?
Yeah, that's a great question. And I don't believe in this regulation, I don't believe there is a timeframe. I think that's something we can adopt.
1598, it says 10 days.
Is it 10 days?
10 days for the completeness.
Okay, so 10 days for completeness review, I guess that.
Okay, review of the application to determine whether or not it is complete.
Right.
After that.
After that, what our current process is, which I would imagine would be the same, is a four-week time period for technical review and then return comments within that. So, we have four weeks from the time they make a formal technical submittal and pay their fees. They got to pay the fees first.
That's, that's at the submittal of the application?
When, when they submit, after the completeness check.
Oh, they don't, okay. So, I'm just trying to get it straight in my head, because I get asked these questions. I submitted an application, and if you haven't, you've determined it's not complete, you get back to me within 10 days.
That's correct.
If you determine it is complete, then you send me an invoice? Or how do I, how do I know how much money to send you?
Then, then we, yeah, we, we send the applicant a notification that your, your application is complete. Here are your fees for technical review, or substantive review, we call it. They pay those fees, and then that's when the clock starts.
And the clock starts after the check hits the bank.
Right.
Okay. I just, I need to have that straight in my head.
Thank you, Mr. Wanamaker. So, on here, I'm looking at traffic impact requirements. And I noticed, you know, on some of the plaits that I've seen go through, say, Santan Valley or wherever, you know, here's a traffic impact analysis, and it's, and, and everything, you know, it's like, here, here's the area, here's this little analysis, but it doesn't go out broader to show what happens further out, you know? So, we don't see the downstream effects of the traffic in that area. Is that going to change? Is that going to expand so we see a larger area?
That's a really good point.
So, so that's not part of this, this update. We do have separate traffic impact analysis guidelines and procedures that we've, that, that are in place. And they, there actually is specifications on how far out from a development you're supposed to go. So, for regional-type developments of very large subdivisions, for example, they have to go out a minimum of three miles. For small developments, like a gas station or something, it's, it's a half mile. So, it does depend on how large, and by large, I mean how much traffic they generate. So, how many homes they're, they're proposing, as an example. So, that's already in, in place. And then, in those guidelines, there's also a requirement that the developer's supposed to reach out to the traffic engineering group before they start their analysis and ask if there's anything else that needs to be considered. Because there's, sometimes there's cases where we need to ask a developer, hey, you've got this, you know, intersection five miles away. It's going to be very clear that all your traffic's going through there. You need to analyze that too. So, they're supposed to do that.
Okay.
If I may, just clarity on that, because I used to get into this debate. And you end up with the bottlenecks, because the developer says, here's my subdivision, I want to improve this part right here. You know, it's four lanes, but then on both sides of it, it's two lanes. And the developer says, that's not my problem down there, downstream or upstream, or however you want to look at it. So, you're telling me now that they're mandated to develop three miles?
No, no, they're supposed to analyze traffic impacts.
Okay, analyze the traffic.
Right.
But there's nothing, we don't, we don't have the authority, and I think this is a legal situation. We can't make him do something beyond his footprint.
So, you're, what you're talking about are kind of two different things. There's the half-street improvements, which are required. And that's, that has to do with, with the zoning and the entitlements that happened prior to the subdivision plat stage. So, that is a, a requirement of like a planned area development, PAD. And then there's the traffic impacts. So, if through the traffic impact analysis, if it's determined that you're having such an impact to the roadway system that additional improvements are needed, such as widening, adding capacity, or a traffic signal that may be a mile or two away, then they have to do that. So, that is kind of a paradigm shift from what the philosophy has been in the past. But the way we're looking at it is, if you're impacting the existing roadway network, the purpose of that impact analysis is to ensure that you're mitigating those impacts. And that may mean improvements beyond the footprint of the development.
That's a, that's a, that's interesting, because it's always been that, you know, the developer's always been able to take the position that, no, that's, that's somebody else's problem down the road. And, and so, I guess, I, so has this been challenged in court? I mean, has anybody really pushed this? This is, because just like Supervisor McClure said, all of a sudden, you know, we got something, you know, three or four miles down the road. And I, I guess my, what I'm having a hard time connecting is, you say, you tell the developer, oh, yes, there's somebody that's looking half a mile down the road for a shopping center. That's, okay, so I'm supposed to, when I do this subdivision, include that impact? That, that, that shopping mall traffic as well?
But to your point, Supervisor Miller, you know, they're pushing it down the road, and that usually becomes our problem.
Well.
And that, and I think that's the part that we're trying to, to look at and evaluate.
So, there's a, there's.
What about impact fees? Does that help?
Yeah, so that's the other component, impact fees. Glad you brought that up. So, all developments have to pay impact fees, which are supposed to address regional impacts to traffic. So, that's kind of a third component to this. So, every building permit that's pulled, they're paying an impact fee, and a portion of that is for transportation. So, a lot of times, when, when we're going through the zoning process, the PAD process, there's a lot of discussion about that. And that's why we want to see a traffic impact analysis that early, because we want to know what kind of impacts is your development going to have? And how do we separate those true direct impacts that can be solely attributed to that development that they then have to pay for versus generalized regional impacts, which could be covered by impact fees versus their standard half-street improvements. So.
So, for instance, in this analysis, I, I'm thinking right off the top of my head, the corner of Schneff and, and Ocatillo. The traffic light that's going to be, need to put there. There's no real development going on there now. But the development that's happening down towards Combe Road is going to be adding to the traffic issues. And my understanding is they're also agreed to help pay for a part of what needs to happen with the traffic light there.
Right.
Is my understanding correct there?
Yeah. So, in, in certain cases, depending on the existing roadway network and where the traffic's going, there may be direct impacts that that development may be required to contribute to.
And that's what this document, the, the changes and things, that's what it's addressing.
This document does that. This document won't do that.
No.
But, and I know we're kind of overlapping a couple of different things here. I'm sorry.
No, that's okay. Continue.
And that's, and then you get into a scenario where maybe a developer says, well, can I not have the impact fees if I develop the rest of this road down here? I mean, there's trade-offs at, at different times that we can work with somebody on something like that.
Oh, yeah, of course. That, that could be.
I think Mr. Attorney wants to straighten me out real quick here.
No, I, Mr. Chairman, Supervisors, and this brings up, like, there is other tools that we try to use. You know, often, development in an area, just not one development comes in, as you've been discussing. There are various developments and different planning stages, and they're all going to have an impact. At times, a development will add to that impact. It, it affects it, but it's not the only factor. We use agreements with the developers where, say, you know, okay, we know you're going to have an impact. Your traffic's going to affect that, but other developments are going to come in, and it's going to need to be bigger than what your development would require. They will pay a portion of that, and then we will use that money later when that improvement is actually made. And so, do, you know, roadway participation agreements, things like that. As Brett was bringing up, you know, if someone has something that's, you know, two, three miles away that we can't directly, you know, tie just to their development, but we can say that you need to transition, you know, account in your development for a transition up to what that is going to have to be. So, there are a number of tools that we try to use to make sure development is adequately paying for its own impacts, but what it's paying for is limited to the impacts of that development and not just regional development.
Yeah, it's a, yeah, it's a lot of work, you know? The thing is, two things there. We, either you're going to participate, or we're going to set money aside, of course. By the time we get around to building the road, it ain't enough money. So, there, there lies the problem. We never agreed to enough money on stuff like that. But I think, I hope that this discussion kind of really shows how the, the zoning and the transportation and all of this stuff overlaps. And can, it's hard to just pierce out this and this.
Well, that, that's right. And to that point, you know, Brent and his staff, they're working on the Title II zoning ordinance updates right now as we speak. And we've been working hand in hand with, with this update and, and that one to make sure that they're complementary and they work together. It was just a little bit easier to get this one processed first. So, but the other one's coming. So, I think.
You know, and it goes back to, I think, what Supervisor McClure was alluding to, is that we've had a lack of regional planning as a whole. And, and our, my area is a prime example of all that happening. And it's, and it, it's been comforting to know that you guys are already looking in the future. We've had multiple discussions with all of the developers in our area. Landowners come to my office, and we've had these conversations. And I remember the president of, of Fulton Homes making the comment that, you know, we've done a great job in our own subdivisions, but we've done a terrible job from a regional perspective. And that was comforting, coming from a builder that's a pretty well-reputable builder that's been building in our county for years.
Pretty reputable.
Well, I don't know if he's, no, he was pretty good-looking that day. Maybe I should say good-looking developer, but anyway, sorry to be politically correct. But anyway, back to the whole point of, I, I think our staff has been doing a great job of pulling things together regionally. And I think, and I appreciate this type of stuff coming forward to us.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, oh, sorry.
So, on the same points, so what's reasonable to, to ask of a developer in terms of proximity to their development? If they, if they have to pay for an expansion of the road in front of their development, and we want them to measure impacts three miles up the road, we can ask them outside of impact fees to, to, to help with that. So, really, it's the government's job. I think Mr. Goodman just said that. We're doing that. It's the government's job to anticipate and plan and build roads. And, and I think we have to be careful about cost shifting to the developer unnecessarily when it's the government's job to, to plan these things. And if we're, if we're adding impact fees, of course, those go, those are, the developer doesn't pay those. Those are added to the price of a home. So, I'd like to see a discussion of that on balance.
If I just make one more comment, though. I mean, the whole planning of transportation, you'd think that Pinal County would be in the best shape, because we have three planning organizations within our boundaries. And we probably struggle with it more than anybody. And, and then you go into a whole litany of reasons for that. But we do have to be more regional, and we need all these people to talk to each other at the same time.
Yeah. And that, you know, when it comes to the developers as a whole, I think they're more, let's be real here. Whatever cost to develop a subdivision, that actually goes into the cost of the home at the end, on the back end. And so, we need to keep that at the forefront when we're thinking about these things that, you know, bottom line is, as a consumer, that ultimately is going to be paying for a lot of these improvements and things that we're moving forward. I just don't want us to be left with the, with the inability to, to actually adequately have the roads, the infrastructure in place to meet the demands of what, the overburden of specific things. Drive down Addaway, for instance. That was already brought up today. Drive down Gansel. I mean, there's no room to expand. Drive down Hunt Highway. And, and all of that is a result of all the development and everything that's, and quite honestly, that's from coming down from Anthem. That's coming down Hunt Highway. That's coming out of Florence and things. Those guys are having to go to work into Phoenix as well. So, anyway, I appreciate what you're talking, and to Supervisor Kavanaugh's point, you know, government is responsible for a lot of the roads and the safety of its citizens. We just got to figure out how we're going to get it paid for. That's it.
Mr. Chairman, Supervisor Kavanaugh, I, I think you made an excellent point. And I'm going to do my best to kind of, to sum up an answer fairly quickly here, which is, we keep the attorneys very busy. And not only our attorneys, but outside attorneys too, to advise us on issues as complicated as this. And it's very. And it's very difficult in a public forum to discuss the whole process and all of the iterations that take place to make these determinations in terms of required improvements. You are correct in terms of state law, and right-of-way dedications and improvements that are within project boundaries. And within those confines, we can require those improvements because those are impacts that are, that are created directly. Mr. Rounds talked about earlier, direct, indirect, and induced, it's the same thing on, on the transportation side. And so we have to take that very holistic approach to how that analysis is done. Development impact fees, as Chris said, they're directly set out for that governmental interface, project to project, on a regional basis to make sure that the system works well. I think where I could enhance this a little bit is, we cannot go out and stipulate a developer to do an improvement three miles from their project. That would be called an exaction. If it's just based on, you're doing an improvement, it's going to have regional impacts, that's where the DIF comes in. The only difference is, to Chris's point earlier, as part of the police power that's under Title II, that we'll be talking about later, which is zoning, it's our responsibility as a government to look at those life safety impacts that exist with the new development coming online. So oftentimes, those projects aren't, you're going to, well, they're never, you're going to widen this road for two miles past your development, they're more pinpointed to safety improvements in terms of, you need to share in one quarter or one half of the cost of this traffic signal that's being impacted as part of the regional network. And then we use development impact fees and/or these DAs, development agreements for regional projects, to fill in that middle ground so we don't have an unsafe situation. I would reflect back on the problems that Chandler and Gilbert had the last 20 years with what they deemed scallop streets. We work really hard to utilize those DIF funds to eliminate the safety challenges associated with the scallop streets. I hope that was a good answer.
Thank you Brett. Yeah, so a good example of, of how we do this is, take Combs Road, which is under, going to be under construction really soon, and there's some preliminary work happening right now. That was a $20 million project that involved multiple agreements with multiple developers, two, two or three different home builders, several businesses, and all contributed in some way or in some fashion. And that was really, and of course, the project is yet to be completed, but that is a good example of how we worked with the development community, so that each, each developer paid for kind of their fair share. But they actually, they got a deal because when we did it as a grander project, we get that economy of scale, and we get it done cheaper, faster, and there's less rework. So the developer doesn't have to build it, and we tear it out and rebuild it. It's all done in one go, so it was really beneficial for everybody. So we do these kinds of things all the time to try to maximize the use of the available money to, to build the infrastructure that that's needed, so. So I'll go ahead and move on with this here. So back to the Title III regulations, so some changes regarding the required improvements. So, let's see here. Installation with currently adopted standards and details from our standards, along with standards from transportation agencies. Oh, so adding some specification with regard to expiration of improvement plans. So we want to make sure that once we have a set of plans that are, that are approved, that they don't just sit out there forever, because things may change, and we, we don't want a project coming back 15 years from now saying, well, I have approved plans, it's, well, things have changed. So the expiration now is, is one year on those approvals, and then they could, they could resubmit for reapproval after that. Let's see here. So one of the big changes in this regulation has with regard to financial assurances and the acceptance of improvements. So what we're proposing here is, is the elimination of the third-party trust program, and I'll talk a little bit more about that in a minute. Then we're establishing a 10% guarantee bond, which is basically a warranty on construction, and then a procedure to, to actually deny the acceptance of improvements if they aren't done to county standard, or if there's issues that need to be repaired. And a procedure for the denial of release of assurances, and the, and denial of the release of the 10% warranty bond as well. And some updates to the substitute assurance procedure, which would occur when, when lots are sold to other builders, and assurances need to be transferred. A little bit about replats. So we added some changes that kind of clarified how a replat is to be done and under what circumstances. So it makes it a little bit easier to get it done. Still requires board approval, but the process should be easier now. And so when we see things like lot combinations or minor changes in lots, some lot lines or tract for, it's like an unforeseen circumstance, it's a little bit easier to, to get those corrected. Yes, question?
Supervisor Miller?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. On that replat, because that was something we pushed through on some water legislation because products change, there's a multitude reasons. As long as they don't use more water, or if they use less water, that they're allowed to, to make that, is that all part of that, that process? Is that kind of encompass here?
The replat is for, for very minor things, like six lots or less that they're adjusting. If, if they're changing, if they want to change the, the number of lots, like on a larger scale, it's going to require a plat amendment, I think is what it's under, the new, under here?
I'm going to call out Supervisor McClure, Mr. Chairman, if that's okay for you.
Yeah, call him out.
So what, what this section was rewritten to do is to deal with very real situations that exist out there on, on platted subdivisions. So I'm going to pick on Mr. McClure for a second. Mr. McClure came to me and Chris about six, nine months ago, and said, hey, there's an issue in my subdivision. And we were unaware of it up till that time, and it, I think it was brought to his attention from the assessor's office. They, the assessors go out every two or three years, they have a schedule, and they assess properties. Well, they went out to assess a property across the street from Supervisor McClure's house, and noticed that property was a retention basin.
Nice.
And so they came back and say, they said, what, what the heck's going on? So we took, we took a look at it, and what we noticed is, on the final plat, where the house was built, was supposed to be the retention basin, and where the retention basin was, was supposed to be where the house was built. Well, there was an engineering change, because the subdivisions start building, they stop, we know what happened in the 2008 to 2010 timeframe, they start back up again, they're sold to other builders, and the original builder is not the one that's building the houses now. Well, to their credit, the new builder went through the proper process to amend the engineering plans and amend the drainage study to move the drainage basin to a better location. It was, it was a better outfall location, it was a lower point. Well, they never went back and amended the plat. So now we've been working with the attorney's office for six to nine months to try and resolve this. If you can imagine now, I believe those houses were built 20 years ago? No, shorter than that?
That home was built, let's see, I moved there in 2008, so that home was built in 14, 15, so only a few years ago.
The builder's done. They build out the subdivision, they've moved on, they don't own any interest in the subdivision anymore. It's really tough for Chris and I to go back to them and say, well, you got to replat the subdivision. This, this is wrong, the plat is wrong. That's a, you know, six months to a year process, very expensive, that builder's out. They don't want to come back and have to deal with that. So the thought behind this was to try and help us with those type of situations. I hope that that was good comedic relief to call you out, sir.
It was lovely, thank you.
So my example's a little different. So mine would be, what was the term you used?
A plat amendment is what I-
That would be a replat.
It'd be a replat, replat.
Yeah, yeah, a different process.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay, so just like with the manual, we've, we've also done public outreach here, posted it online, published it. And again, we anticipate a public hearing sometime in May with potential for adoption. And the Title III proposed changes and everything is, is on the website there. Let's see here. So again, any public improvements, we own them forever, we've got to deal with it, and we've got to accept whatever, at the end, that infrastructure is ours, and we've got to maintain it. And also, some of the processes that are being updated and changed, it does affect how much, how much money and how long it takes to, to get these, these things done. Let's see here. So as with the manual update, we did present this to the Planning and Zoning Commission, and they did forward a recommendation of approval for this here, so. And then since, since that approval from P and Z, there was a couple changes that we added, which had to do with, and this is in the manual, some specifications on the composition of asphalt, some, some specification having to do with signage on local-to-local street connections within subdivisions, adding a reference to the Maricopa County roadway design manual, and then some additional typos and grammatical errors, corrections. Just some other things to note that with this, I guess this case here, that there's no, we're removing references to the Title IV, which is the Minor Land Division Code, or the Community Design Handbooks, those are really not part of these, so we're taking that out. Let's see here, five-week public comment period. So, and to date, we really haven't had any formal public comments on any of this. We did have a builder reach out to us with some concerns about the potential removal of the third-party trust program, but there was no formal comment submitted.
So I guess with that, what kind of information, what are we putting out there saying, hey, we're making some changes? What you got, we need your input?
Yeah, so these will be posted online, and there'll be a, a press release or a public announcement letting them know, hey, this is, there's the public comment period. So, so right now, the deadline for any last-minute changes will be April 23rd, so we'll have that, that public comment period from there. And then we'll have the actual public hearing, we're hoping, on May 15th, so.
So I guess, to, to ask my question in a different way then, I mean, when we say, put it out there in the public, we advertise it inside the newspaper and stuff like that, do we ever send out any kind of formal email or anything to a lot of the developers and them? Or is that opening a can of worms?
Well, we certainly can do that. As an example, we did meet with Pinellas Partnership and several developers-
Okay.
-in, in an informal setting, and just have an open discussion about this. And that was where one of the developers did have some concerns about the third-party trust program. But again, no, they didn't offer any alternatives, and there was no formal comments submitted.
Okay. Supervisor Miller?
Yeah, real quick. Thank you, Mr. Chairman. What's the modification on the third-party trust? Can you give me a Reader's Digest version of what you're changing?
Yeah, so what we're proposing is the elimination, so the complete removal of that program. So what the third-party trust is, is, is a means or a mechanism to basically incentivize the developer to finish their required improvements. And so the, the lots that are created as part of the subdivision plat process would be placed into a trust, which prevents their sale or transfer to, to property, to homeowners.
Until that portion is paid.
Until they do their required improvements. So, so, but this program is very, can be very complicated, and there's a lot of nuances to it with regards to how releases occurred. And I've actually had situations where a developer was requesting a release for a particular lot because they had a homeowner moving in, and we said, well, you're not even done with the improvements. And then they had to put this homeowner in the hotel for whoever knows how long until, until the improvements were finished. And so the, and that's actually happened more than once.
Oh, yeah.
So it's-
Yeah, on Magma Ranch area, yeah.
But I guess, and you said they didn't have any alternatives, or didn't suggest any alternatives.
So right now-
So how is it structured now?
So right now, the code has several options for a financial assurance. We can do cash, which I've never had anybody do, a, a letter of credit, a performance bond, and that's our preferred method. Let's just get a bond, and then they do the improvements, and they get that released. Or a third-party trust is another option. So those are the options they have, and so by removing this, we still have cash, letter of credit, and a performance-
And I would say probably those three are probably the most often used.
Right.
This, this third-party is probably pretty far out there.
Yes, as far as I know, the third-party trust is, is pretty uncommon.
Have you ever had to make a call on a bond, do we know of?
Well, there's some times when we tried to, but the money wasn't available for some reason.
Whoa!
Those are old developments from years ago.
But, that's the idea of the bond, that the money would be there to finish-
Right.
-the project.
Yeah, and this had to do with some old developments from the early 2000s, when the, when the economy went down, so. But the third-party trust program, it's not really a financial assurance because there's no-
I, I agree with that.
There's no money available to complete those improvements.
I'm sorry I didn't pick up on it sooner, would have talked when we were on that.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman? Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Supervisor Miller? To, to tag on to your question a little bit, you know, collecting on a bond is not as easy as you think, because the bond issuer usually has the right to step in and, and get somebody else to come in and complete the project.
Yeah, that's right. I kind of remember something like that.
And that in itself can draw the project out a lot longer while they go out to find another contractor to finish what was not done.
To, to do this punch list of everything that's not done. Okay, well, thank you. I'm sorry I digressed.
No problem. So if, if the board would, would like, we could go through the entire document, or you could read it on your own, or however we want to do this?
Any preference? Move on? I, I just, we have one preference so far, I've got another head nod. Yeah, we're good. I think this is something that we could evaluate on our own, and then we've got questions, you're always available, correct?
That's right, and of course, we can, we can work those things out, and then if, if you guys have comments or request changes, you know, we can, you know, we can add that or, or-
Are we like everybody else, we're going to have to go online to get it?
You can just send it to me, and you should have all this in your, in your packet with this item.
All right.
And I, I just want one other comment. Just, I agree with Supervisor Goodman in that, really, we need to get this out to the development community, not, you know, just as best we can, because there'll be, and it doesn't matter how well we do it, somebody will say they didn't get it. So, but let's, let's really make a concerted effort to contact the people that this affects on a day-to-day basis.
Sure, yeah, we will do that.
Okay. Anybody else? All right, thank you.
All right, thanks.
Mr. Abraham? All right, with that, we are adjourned.